Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright Board of Trustees meetings to order this morning on July 23 at 9:02 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, will you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correo. Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Present.
Pam Haynes.
Let the record note, Board Member Haynes is present.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry LeGrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Here.
Joseph Williams. We have a quorum. President Costa.
Thank you so very much. With that, I'd like to ask our colleague trustee Rawlings to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Colleagues, is there any discussion on the order of our agenda this morning? Okay, seeing none, we will just launch right in. First is my president's report, which I will keep fairly brief. Obviously, I'd like to introduce our new colleague, trustee member De La Fuente. Looking forward to, we got to know him a little bit yesterday at the Board of Governors, but certainly excited to hear your perspectives on this. The Calbright Board of Trustees, which is really a new and innovative approach to higher ed, so welcome. I also just wanted to know that of the agenda items, I'm particularly excited to hear about the statewide government sector impact report. Jida and I have had a lot of conversations on that. And having been involved in public service for most of my life, both at the county level and the state level, I think that those jobs really are the pinnacle of what we're hoping to offer to Calbright students, which are good-paying, union jobs that offer benefits and an economic trajectory. I think it is the perfect example of furthering our public purpose and not only providing a public option, but also providing people to help fund or to power our public sector. So I'm looking forward to that report in particular. With that, and without further ado, I will turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I'd also like to begin by giving a warm welcome to our newest board member, Ricardo De La Fuente. We're so grateful to have you here and always energized by new blood on the board. I am also feeling energized and refreshed after returning from the Jobs for the Future Horizons Executive Summit in Washington, DC. Between conversations with executive leaders spanning education, business, philanthropy, technology, and nonprofits, it was clear that across all of these sectors, there's a committed group of individuals committed to working together to advance opportunities for those facing systemic barriers and access to good jobs. Even more energizing is that when I highlight Calbright's student-centered model and our accomplishments over the past few years, I met with resounding excitement and support for the impact that our institution can have on adult learners, precisely because we have chosen to do this work and to build this work and evolve our model from the lens of the learner, and most importantly, standing at the nexus of the intersection of quality, education, training, and good jobs. I'm also thrilled to begin today's meeting with just gratitude for the exciting news that Governor Newsom and the legislature fully invested in Calbright's innovative model for the 2024-2025 year. You all know, Calbright launched just five years ago with a mission to really reimagine education and training and to create economic opportunities for Californians that would otherwise be left behind. And in just a few short years, we have grown so rapidly. Our student body sits around 4,000, sits around 4,500. Our 70% of our students continue to represent BIPOC communities. We have launched a variety of skills-based programs, and importantly, we've now awarded over 730 certificates. We became an accredited institution, and we continue to drive solutions for adult learners and for their success in a way that is research and mission-driven and through strong-aligned partnerships. It's clear that our flexibly-paced programs and the robust student-support efforts that we've undergauged in are successfully creating that equitable access to economic mobility while also filling critical gaps that folks experience within higher education and within the job market. I'm extraordinarily grateful to the Calbright team for their dedication and hard work to drive this progress, and I'm looking forward to another year of achievements. Now, with full funding from the state, we'll finalize our budget in the coming weeks to further advance our student-centered model, which learners consistently validate as the thing that is critical to their success, their educational success and their career success. And that'll closely align with our overarching strategic vision goals through the board-approved strategic vision. One, to serve students and employers by reimagining the student experience and what that can look like in an asynchronous online environment that is focused on skills. Two, to actually drive institutional excellence while ensuring that we're expanding operational capacity amongst that growth to ensure equity, inclusion, but also constant improvement. And three, to really amplify our innovative approach, partnering with mission-aligned organizations to advance adult learner success and amplify the need for student-centered design in everything that we do. Our tentative budget will also reflect the need to be nimble and to position Calbright with the ability to strategically scale in a sustainable manner. We'll also prepare for final approval during the next month's board meeting in advance of the chancellor's office deadlines and look forward to an opportunity to share more details as the budget comes together. Consistent with Chancellor Christian's 2030 vision, Calbright continues to drive solutions in the space of adult learners. And at the heart of Calbright's mission is this need to support that learner's success through innovation. As we evolve to serve more learners and to do it better, our impact grows. So as many of you know, last fall, Calbright College partnered with Acxim Collaborative to sponsor a design track in the 2023-2024 Learning Engineering Tools Competition that was focused expressly on adult learners in higher education. The competition is now at the stage where it's featuring finalists who offered proposals for technologies and innovations that are focused on making college more equitable, more accessible, and ultimately more effective for adult students. And so the exciting news is stay tuned. On Thursday, we'll be announcing who the winners are and be sharing that with the board and with the community at large. We are also looking forward to dive in deeper and share more as we begin the process of implementing these tools and sharing these insights across the CCC system. So today's board agenda is an exciting one, including collaborative efforts that aim to take working adults off the sidelines and equip them with critical in-demand skills and experiences to actually succeed in today's workforce. Taken together, the efforts will help build a skilled and diverse workforce across California. And I'm particularly excited about the potential to partner with Nexus Edge, a platform that integrates employer-defined skills to curriculum and also provides equal access to quality technical, vocational, and entrepreneurship training. During our discovery phase, this prospective partnership has received strong interest from employers and has also earned the support of the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, GoBiz, California's leader for job growth, economic development, and business assistance efforts for small and mid-sized businesses. Our VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, Michael Younger, will share a little bit more later. But this partnership is exciting because it'll allow even more Calbright learners to earn employer-validated credentials, but also participate in hands-on work experiences across California. As a leader in the skills-based online education space, we recognize that the strong pathway to good jobs is more than just offering students that flexible, accessible education. It is also deeply and increasingly about that collaboration across sectors, whether it's higher education, business, or philanthropy, and also those who are working together to advance that common agenda of realizing skills-based hiring, as well as apprenticeship opportunities, career readiness resources, so that we can work collectively together to tackle equity across California's workforce. With that, I just want to extend my thanks to President Costa and the rest of the board. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, we do not have closed session today, so we will not be going into closed session and reconvening, which leads us to section three of our agenda, the consent items. Is there any trustee comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There was no public comment.
Great. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rawlings with Chang with a second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Casey Chang.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Bye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Hi.
Did you get Board Member LeGrand? He just added on.
I'm sorry, Harry LeGrand. Thank you.
I did just want to know also, we had our first retirement. I don't know if you guys got that. But that's kind of a monumental moment in our personnel packet. How about had their first employee retirement?
Yeah. Well, I'll just say two things about that. So Kip Need was with us with the college from the beginning. He actually predates me. And he's a longstanding contributor in various roles within the community college system overall. So not only were we lucky to have him for a number of years, especially in the beginning days, but also just want to take a moment to acknowledge his deep and large contributions, not just to Calbright, but to the system overall.
Congratulations to Kip and best of luck on the next chapter. Next up, we're into section four of the agenda, the action portion of the agenda. And first up, we have 4.1, the Board of Trustees and Executive Committee Meeting Dates for 2025. Really exciting stuff here, folks. Hopefully, everybody has synced these dates with your calendar to ensure there's no conflicts. Is there any trustee discussion on this item? Everyone seems happy. Is there any public discussion on the item?
There was no public comment.
All right. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
I have Haynes with a motion, Rawlings with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Casey Chang.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Harry LeGrand.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much. Next up, we have item 4.2, which is Approval of an Amendment to the Agreement with Three Arrows Up Consulting. We have our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty, to present the item.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the board. I'm Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction, and I'm here today seeking board approval for the Three Arrows Up Amendment. Calbert's 2024 and 2020 to 2027 strategic vision and goal number four is focused on developing a sustainable funding model. To work towards achieving this goal, Calbright entered into agreement with Three Arrows Up Consulting in March 2024 with a not-to-exceed amount of $89,500. Three Arrows Up Consulting has specialized expertise and experience in developing innovative models for funding compse-based education programs. From March 2024 through June of 2024, Three Arrows Up Consulting collaborated with Calbright's Chief Financial Officer, Executive Director of Finance, Vice President of Sustainable Growth and Development, Senior VP of Strategic Initiatives, and myself, along with input from our president and CEO, to make significant strides, completing with a comprehensive landscape analysis of compse-based education policy at the federal and state levels. This analysis informed an early draft of the compse-based education funding model. But as you can imagine, there is still more work to do. This includes, but is not limited to, testing the model, developing draft policies, and outlining a comprehensive communication strategy. As you know, an institution-wide district CBE model does not currently exist across the California community college system. And this, unless on a handful of institutions have fully implemented a direct assessment model. So this really limits our access to experts and institutional funding practices that can be modified and adopted by Calbright. However, Calbright is very hopeful that the work that we do over the next 11 months will allow us to establish a sustainable model that can be adopted not only by Calbright, but also benefit other California community colleges in the future. The continuation of our contract with Three Arrows Up is of utmost importance at this point, and the continued engagement will allow us to formalize, build, and implement the funding model. Therefore, I am here to request approval to amend the agreement with Three Arrows Up Consulting, not to exceed, extend, oh, excuse me, and to continue, extend the term for 11 months, commencing on August 1 until June 30 of 2025, and increase the not-to-exceed amount and then an additional $150,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $238,500.
Thank you for your presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments regarding this item? Board Member Epstein.
I mean, I totally support this. I was curious, when will the board be exposed to some of the ideas that they're coming up with, that you and them are coming up with?
I'm going to defer to it.
Absolutely. We actually just took receipt of the sort of straw man draft model and are kind of working it through internal things. And what the model is currently designed to do is to reflect a lot of the costs associated with our delivery model, including not just the curricular content and the structure of the academic program, but the integrated supports and other aspects of this. So we're kind of vetting that part of the data and the modeling before we come to the board to share not just the structure, but also the analysis that's been done to understand why this approach is sort of sufficient in this way. And I will say, just in my experience in policymaking, often programs get designed disconnected from program model. So funding model almost separate from the way that we actually do our work or administer programs. And so what is going to be truly interesting for the board to be briefed on and to share the research around is how those two pieces fit together. So it's for us, we think it will be just actually a matter of weeks. We want to share it with the board, and then we also look forward in the fall to sharing it with others in the field who have similarly been searching for and have been deeply invested in understanding, not just for state apportionment purposes in the context of California, but most importantly, in terms of a pathway into Title IV financial aid, how an asynchronous direct assessment model can function with access to federal funding. And so those conversations are just a few weeks and into a few months ahead in the fall.
So I too am excited about this venture into figuring out the funding model and recognizing that there are only a handful of institutions that are kind of grappling with that. Are we ahead of the curve relative?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so all eyes are on, in many cases.
Yeah, actually, I'll just say like a couple of things are coming together in a very interesting way. So I'll get just momentarily wonky because it's a prior occupational hazard. So just let, feel indulged me. The, you know, the, when the direct assessment federal legislation was created to provide an opportunity for us to move away from the basic credit hour as the primary way funding was allocated, so that the time that you have your butt in the seat versus actual measurement of learning. When that first occurred, it was always contemplated that there would be guidance and direction from the department as to what that looked like. And so in two administrations ago, that was really designed to try to lean into that question. Subsequently, that guidance was revised in other administrations to be much more constraining. And so folks, the handful of institutions that were pursuing the direct assessment approach, some of them kind of shrugged shoulders and went back to the credit hour. And so for most institutions and programs, that may not be a hurdle or a problem because they're operating at a four-year degree level. But for our students, they need the flexibility and they also, we need it in terms of the opportunity for them to get an earlier credential or a shorter-term credential. And so.
I don't want us to stray too far from the noticed agenda item. I know everyone's excited and we're going to have, we're going to have more details in a forthcoming publicly noticed meeting.
I applaud you.
That's okay.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to open it to any public comment on the item.
There is no public comment.
Great. Thank you. With that, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion in a second on the contract.
Move to approve. Second.
Oh, all right. I have Haynes with a motion and Villa Vicencio with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Casey Chang.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Harry LeGrand.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
And Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thanks, Terry. We have our Vice President of Learning and Instruction with us again for the next item, which is item 4.3, which is Approval of an Amendment to Agreement with Volta Learning Group.
Yes, I am still here. Now I'm going to present and seek your approval to amend our agreement with the Volta Learning Group. The Learning and Instruction Team began working with Kate Kazin from the Volta Learning Group in spring of 2024. The Volta Learning Group works the wide range of industry and education clients to create learning strategies that drive organizational and business imperatives. Because of Volta's expertise in compse-based learning, they can provide insights into assessment design, specifically ensuring assessment validity and reliability, as well as consulting on evidence-based design and documentation. Our engagement focused on the development of durable skills, excuse me, a durable skills framework and playbook for project-based assessment designed. And I'm really excited to walk you through the framework and highlight some of our accomplishments a bit later during the informational section of the board meeting today. But after completing the initial Volta Group engagement, we identified a need to move beyond summative assessment design to validate our pre-assessments. For Calbright's direct assessment model, pre-assessment serves as the foundational tool to ensure educational readiness and inform a student's personalized learning pathway. Calbright students complete a pre-assessment to evaluate their current knowledge and skills. The pre-assessment then informs the personalized pathway, moving students to skills not yet gained or moving students directly to a summative assessment project. In the context of Calbright's model, the importance of valid and reliable pre-assessments is heightened. It's imperative that we have aligned, well-constructed, and valid pre-assessments. And Kate will work closely with her curriculum assessment faculty, as well as our instructional design faculty and subject matter experts, to review, refine, and develop a framework for reliable pre-assessment design. So Kate's extensive background and expertise brings me here today to seek approval for the specialized services exception approval of an amendment to the agreement with Learning Volta Group to extend the term of the agreement through December 31 of 2024 and exceed, and excuse me, increase the not-to-exceed amount by an additional $94,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $189,000.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments regarding this item? I have one, which is, it seems like these, this work is like never done, right? I mean, as we learn more, I would assume that we're constantly looking at different pre-assessment models, just given that the economy, like AI, for example, there's things we haven't even thought of, right? So how do we address that this is like a constantly moving target?
Yeah, and I could start, but obviously, President, if you'd like to jump in. I think for us, like as we continue to design and build towards the model, it's really an opportunity to learn, you know, either what experts aren't out there that we can refer to and modify and refine from. And there are just gaps in the field. A lot of times, assessment is built in kind of silos. And when you have a direct assessment online model, people are going to want to look and see your pre-assessments and your summatives. And we need to be able to pull those up. We need to have evidence that they're well-designed, and they really can inform student learning and then validate their learning. And so for us, it's just kind of identifying gaps as we can continue to build and I think improve our model.
Vice President Agüinaldo.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question as to the process of this. So this 4.3 is unique because we're being asked to approve that it's a special services exception and also approve the contract. But on 4.2, we were not asked to approve the specialized services exception, just the contract. Could you just explain the difference between those two, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So when I brought the three arrows up, it was actually the specialized service contract was pre-approved at that point in time. So this one had not been pre-approved when we worked with Kate previously. I believe that's the distinction between the specialized service contracts.
Okay. Thank you very much. I mean, both of them are hyper-specialized. So I agree that the exception applies, and it just goes to the very unique nature of our work. Thank you. I add one thing to the ever-changing, ever-evolving environment. One thing that's really important that Shannon's team has done and relates to this contract, because this is what makes it actionable, is actually the standardization of the rubrics for assessment. So basically, the nature of the design of assessment itself, agnostic to content. And so I do think there are, while things are moving, there are some things that are standardized and contexted. And that's the space we're going to continue to stay abreast and aware of. But that's also, in some ways, a bit more stable foundation to build upon as the content might vary or the skills may change, or those things might happen. But the standards we use to say, this is how we're approaching assessment, those are things that you can build a house on.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this particular item?
Just a point of clarification. So this was, correct me if I'm wrong. So it's my understanding that you mentioned that this was implemented spring 2024? And you said you would present at a later point in the meeting how successful this program is in terms of assessing, obviously, our students and where they are. I was wondering if you, given that you will talk a little bit about it later on, but it has been successful? And if you could talk a little bit about the efficacy of the system, just briefly, just to give us some context and knowledge as we vote on that side.
Yeah, absolutely. So for the success of the time that we worked with Kate, we were actually able to develop the durable skills framework, which I will build a highlight. And we're going to be rolling that out as we're rolling out our new learning management system and content management system, which actually goes live tomorrow with our first new program. So not able to speak to efficacy currently, but we are able to speak to the success of completing the process and landing on the framework for the durable skills, as well as having really chin-strong summative assessments that will provide evidence that students have mastered those skills.
I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Great. Not seeing any other trustee comments. Is there any public comment on this item?
There was no public comment.
All right, colleagues, I'll take a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have the motion with trustee Gomez Heitzberg in the second with Villa Lobos. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Casey Chang.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Harry LeGrand.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
And Bloss Villa Lobos. Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next up on the action portion of our agenda, we have item 4.4, Partnership Agreement between Calbright and Nexus Edge to Create the California Workforce Accelerator Pilot Program. We have our Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation as the presenter.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the board. Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. And I'm excited to be joined by virtually the co-founder of Nexus Edge, Eddie Lynn, as well as California Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, Regional Business Development Specialist Dustin McDonald. Both Mr. Lynn and Mr. McDonald are joining us again virtually, and they will offer remarks at the end of my presentation. As you heard during the president's opening remarks, our workforce and economic development strategies here at Calbright aim to take working-age adults off the sidelines into skills-focused workforce programs powered by industry validation and established pipelines into the labor market. Our collaborations, partnerships, practices seek to not only Our collaborations, partnerships, practices seek to not only improve economic well-being, also the quality, but also the quality of life for communities up and down the state of California. Next slide. Today, we are bringing forward a truly unprecedented statewide public-private partnership that expands on Calbright's mission and impact by co-creating a new and innovative direct connection for students to work-based learning experiences and employment. The California Workforce Accelerator Pilot Program is supported by partners like, again, Nexus Edge, a California-based ed tech career navigation platform that integrates employer-defined skills into curriculum and provides equitable access to quality technical, vocational, and entrepreneurship training. California's Governor's Office, California Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, really the state's leader for job growth, economic development, as well as business assistance efforts, is also a part of this collaboration. And then finally, the California Division of Apprenticeship Standards, a division within the California Labor and Workforce Development Agency that consults with employers to develop viable career pathways like apprenticeships to increase productivity and strengthen the state's economy. Next slide. The skills-based hiring movement is alive and well, both in California and across the country. On the employer's side, a tight labor market has led companies to face difficulty filling key roles. And in some industries, it turns out that those jobs don't actually require a four-year degree. Removing the four-year degree requirement that had been historically used as a proxy for a candidate's range and depth of skills, and essentially replacing it with a portfolio of validated work experience opens up a really, really larger talent pool to better enable those employers to fill the roles, key roles. Employers who hire based on skills may also be more likely to find a better fit for these roles they need to fill based on the candidate's specific skills and competencies, improving retention rates, and saving them costs associated to high turnover. The California Workforce Accelerator Program would not only supply skilled workers, but also partner with companies to convert their training requirements into classroom materials that would be integrated into learning process. This is the next level of co-creation with industry partners. From the job seeker's perspective, the shift to skills-focused hiring could enable greater job access for workers who have been traditionally underrepresented in key industries and occupations that don't actually require the degree. Earning employer credentials throughout their program participation will make them more competitive in built-in recruiting pipelines directly into the labor market. Slide four. The California Workforce Accelerator has four key objectives, as you see listed here. Relevant employer training. The program will integrate in real-time the latest industry-specific training, materials, and simulations that provide students with real-world work experience. Second, recognize employer credentials. Throughout the program, students will receive employer-recognized credentials and badges to validate their mastery of key subject matter. Third, expansive employer connections. The program will offer students the opportunity to leverage the built-in direct employer connection network, introducing students to their prospective employers. And lastly, rapid priority hiring. Students within this ecosystem will enter a separate recruiting pipeline, which evaluates their portfolio of work performed and skills obtained throughout the program, bypassing the traditional separate job application process. Slide five. So here's a look at how this California Workforce Accelerator ecosystem would work, right? To recruit students, we would leverage Calbright's existing marketing and outreach processes, engaging with prospective students all across California at job fairs and community events and conferences. Our students engage with Calbright, seeking to transition into career, new careers, incumbent workers seeking promotions, or even upskilling opportunities. We also have a significant actively enrolled student population that may be interested in this ecosystem as well. While enrolled at Calbright, student participants will be matched with an employer and participate in a paid work-based learning experience while earning credentials and badges as they complete key subject matter. Student participants will have a portfolio of work and credentials, badges, to share as they enter the dedicated employer recruitment pipeline of skills-based hiring employers. Job interviews will commence, and full wraparound services and support, interview preparation, and counseling will be provided, creating the last mile of support that our students require and deserve. Slide six. One example of a prospective employer partner is HubSpot. HubSpot is an American developer and marketer of software products for inbound marketing, sales, and customer service, founded in 2006. The California Workforce Accelerator and HubSpot prospective partnership aims to provide students in California with applied learning and work experiences, opportunities through a custom training and micro internship program, bridging the skills gap and offering paid project opportunities within the HubSpot ecosystem. Interns would receive live coaching from industry experts and be matched with HubSpot customers to complete a 20-hour project using HubSpot marketing AI software. Micro internships have been widely recognized for employers because they really allow employers to access, engage, assess, and hire the top talent. In fact, 96% of students who complete a micro internship are professionally employed upon completion, and over 80% of students selected for micro internships come from historically underrepresented backgrounds. Slide seven. This slide really speaks to Nexus Edge's track record within the California Community College System, right? Greater than 45,000 students have taken employer match exams as a part of the ecosystem. 60-plus community colleges have leveraged the Nexus Edge platform and services. 13,000 employer-validated credentials have been earned by students, and as many as 91 course types exist today that does not include yet, right, Calbright's courses and programs. Next slide. Success stories. So a number of success stories exist in this current ecosystem. And now, with the creation of the California Workforce Accelerator Program and the statewide impact of Calbright, we intend to amplify and scale this work. On this slide, I listed a few examples of students that have secured internships in top industries for roles that traditionally have required a four-year degree. But given the onset of the transformation as it relates to degree resets, these students have had great opportunities to obtain these internships without four-year degrees. Next slide. So the total run cost as it relates to program development funding to Calbright for this pilot, including planning and administration, high-touch, access to advising, wraparound services, design, case management, employer recruitment, placement services, and the also administration of grant and also stipend funding for students, would be $1.9 million, $1,923,400. This remains consistent with the U.S. Department of Commerce's estimates of internships and apprenticeship program startup costs. The program will benefit from resource contributions from Calbright, Nexus Edge, as well as technical assistance and guidance from the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. And all parties will jointly continue to seek workforce and economic development funding from philanthropy, industry, state, and federal entities to ensure the program's longevity. So our next steps, after seeking and obtaining your support and approval today to move this partnership forward, will be to finalize the partnership agreement and begin to the hard work of planning for this incredible pilot program. This includes working with a marketing and communications team on communication strategies, working with the internal Calbright team to develop competitive and equitable screening and onboarding processes for a potential first cohort, and of course, working with other partners on logistics and program launch schedules. So at this time, I would like to introduce Eddie Lynn, co-founder of Nexus Edge, to offer just a few remarks, followed by Dustin McDonald, the Regional Business Development Specialist at GoBiz. At the conclusion of their remarks, I'll be happy to take your questions. Eddie?
Thank you so much. I'm gonna provide a little bit more information about Nexus Edge. At Nexus Edge, we believe that creating equality in the workforce at scale is what leads to systemic change in social equity. And we have included employers to play a leading role in this change to ensure that there's lasting social impact. And we share a lot of common values and goals with Calbright. Calbright's statewide reach and leadership in workforce development, higher education, is very unique by being fully online, accredited, and accessible with a focus on competency-based education models. That propels a lot of our shared efforts in providing students with in-demand skills, personalized career roadmaps, and direct connections to industry through work-based learning experiences. We really believe that this work democratizes access to economic opportunity. And we look forward to working alongside Calbright and the Governor's Office of Economic and Business Development to bring this effort to fruition. I've been impressed by Calbright's spirit of innovation, and I have great conviction that this work is not only setting the standard for innovating education across the state of California, but for the entire U.S. as well. It's been a great privilege to speak to you all today. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Eddie. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you so much, Mr. Younger. Thank you so much, Eddie, and the Calbright Board for hosting us today. Dustin McDonald with the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. As was mentioned, I'm a regional specialist and served the LA Orange County region. However, GoBiz has a team of people like me that they put together over the last couple of years across the whole state. Our work in this partnership will be to do the work we're already doing, directly engaging with companies that are entering the California marketplace from others, be they international or domestic, and introducing this concept of the California Workforce Accelerator to them. Already, we've had a number of conversations just in my region with businesses, and there's a lot of enthusiasm and excitement for the partnership. Following this discussion, we'll have an opportunity to actually start building out that framework for how we will work to advertise this program directly to businesses across the state, not just in my region, but full statewide. So GoBiz is very excited for this partnership, very excited to be doing work with Calbright and Nexus Edge to move all of this forward. And thank you again for the time today.
Thank you so much, both Eddie Lynn and Dustin McDonald. And at this time, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, comments? Board member Haynes?
So thank you for the presentation. So I have a question. Obviously, this is a wonderful partnership. And it really fills a gap that Calbright can actually expand upon. We have a group of programs currently that might fit into this. Given that this too is really, it's statewide, the question I have, will it prompt the possibility of looking at what the marketplace currently has and what the opportunities may be that would prompt different, also additional kinds of courses that would be offered?
It's a great question. It's a great question. I'd love our president CEO to speak to that, too. And just really quickly, I would say that that was a part of the reason we went into this partnership, because it gives us direct access to industry requirements, and we're co-creating those requirements. And so in talking with our Vice President of Learning Instruction, who's been a key partner in this effort, we want to leverage this partnership to stay current as well, right? In addition to placing our students in industry, we now have this kind of one-to-one, both hearing from industry about requirements and those shifts. We know things are cyclical. We know sometimes the marketplace is volatile. And so we have that real-time input, if you will, in doing that. And it definitely will help us very much as we look to build our programs, the skills, competencies, and others.
I love that. And I'll just add two things. One is, if we look at this as a responsive talent plate, so, you know, GoBiz's role in being able to really service small and mid-sized firms, which are the bulk of employer types in California, up and down the state, we can think about, what does that reciprocal data look like? What do we, how do we also not just meet current industry standards, but continue to understand and have a better pulse on what the needs of small and mid-sized businesses are in California? And how we, as an education institution, can sort of clear the decks to be able to organize that education part of the marketplace, to be more cooperative contributors, to build out, not just at Calbright, but across other programs at other institutions as well, programs that are aligned to meet the talent needs of small and mid-sized firms, and how do we do that in a coordinated way across the state? So we're excited absolutely for the opportunity for Calbright students. But when we think about pilot opportunities like this, what we also think about is how can they be expanded and leveraged to reach more students, whether Calbright students or students up and down the state? And so I do think there's gonna be important learnings coming from this that are not just about the design of the program model, but much more so about how do we be more responsive as a state collaboratively to be able to address not just who gets access to what jobs, but to also meet the economic needs of California and the needs of small and mid-sized businesses in the state?
I have a follow-up question, and that is that Calbright has made a commitment to service all adult learners, including those justice-involved adult learners as well. And so, given that that's one of the Calbright's values, and I would assume hopefully the board's values, going, does GoBiz have that same value? And in working with business employers, hopefully, they will too. That isn't always guaranteed.
I appreciate that, Board Member Haynes. And so part of the reason we really invested in this partnership in terms of thought leadership, time, and collaboration is because of the like-minded vision. So as you know, the state of California really ushered in this fair-trance employer concept, and it's strongest in the state of California than any other state. And so we really believe, and as a state and have invested in supporting for-chance employer efforts from the previous governor, Governor Brown, to Governor Newsom, really investing and replenishing funds to be able to support that. So absolutely, so GoBiz as a entity within the Governor's Office strongly believes in both sourcing employers across the board, and especially those fair-trance employers, to ensure that underserved communities and those that have highest barriers of entry, you mentioned justice involved, but aging out of foster care, other challenges in terms of barriers of getting good access to education exist. And that's why they are the strongest partner. And so President Menon mentioned, yes, for Calbright students, that is our primary expectation here at Calbright. But this model is available to all 116 community colleges. A part of the co-creation was to provide a resource for the system to be able to have that direct access to employers in a way that it's truly a partnership and the state's full backing of this effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really excited about this program, especially for Calbright. And you mentioned that it's, it'll be available for all 116 California community colleges. I really am excited because it feels like we're finally taking something from like the European model, aligning, again, higher ed with industry and aligning those skills and creating, of course, those connections with employers. And I'm grateful to see that the Governor's Office is also involved in sort of innovative and companies coming into California, both domestic and foreign. There's a lot of potential here. I wanted to ask two questions on the Nexus Edge success stories there because I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on it. These particular students on that slide shows that they came from community college, and there's a list of four-year universities here. I just wanted to clarify, so these students were at community college and were connected to these companies during their internships? Didn't have to go through the four-year, these traditional four-year institutions, correct? And second of all, I was wondering if you can also tie in, and I'm sure you've thought about this already, but with credit for prior warning, and how that component fits into this model, particularly for adult learners that Calbright serves. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Yeah, if the CEO is still on, please do respond to question one, and I'll take your last question on CPO. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is Eddie Lynn, CEO of Nexus Edge. So yeah, on that slide is a series of success stories from the Citigroup program, actually. So what happened there is that students participated in a program led by City Venture Capital's teams workforce program. So those students were able to get a lot of those internships while they were in community college students. And the reason why they have the four-year degrees in there, too, is that's where they end up transferring to as well. So, you know, they were able to really break through those barriers and get those internships at JP Morgan while still being in community college. And then ultimately, I don't, like, maybe it was the reason why they were able to transfer where they did as well, but. But one of the big important points is that we were breaking those traditional barriers and trying to build a skills first based hiring model. And that's what that slide was all about.
Thank you so much. And on your C P L question continues to be at the forefront. And so working with uh Dr. McCarty again, as it relates to what this partnership uh can do to help uh our efforts advance in C P L, we're absolutely um considering that as one of the competitive advantages, or at least an advantage of being able to um have this partnership, learn from this partnership and then assess some level of 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 prior learning credit, if you will, um as a part of this. Another effort as we look at uh C P L and why it's uh so important is we talked about uh priority communities and populations, veterans and others uh that may be um very much uh in line for these programs. We want to ensure uh that they are provided the credit for their previous experience that's both transferable and that's directly applicable to the careers of choice uh that they land in and the internships and micro internships that are placed in.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think I think this program sounds really interesting and I um I have this recollection Eddie, that you and I met a few years ago and you tried to explain this to me and I didn't understand it. Uh, and we met at some event, but the the question I have is uh there, this is a lot of money for Calbright, almost $2 million, a significant chunk of our budget. And you know, the goal of 20,000 uh students is very aggressive, I think, given the the pace of things in community colleges. And I guess um I I I want, and I'm not sure why we are paying the whole amount for the entire community college system. Why there couldn't have been more uh more financial support offered by the other community colleges? I mean, what i- i- do we consider this part of our mission to take such a big chunk of our budget and to and to have this aggressive program in 11 months to recruit 20,000 students? It just seems a little beyond uh reality.
I appreciate that. I'm happy to do that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, I'm happy to talk about uh prior metrics if you like me to.
Yeah, and just uh one moment, I I think you're absolutely right, uh, board member, in terms of the investment. And so a part of it is uh giving the approval uh for the up to um the 1.9 million as as we look at the growth uh plan. So one of the things we want to make the board confident on is as that um resource and growth uh comes to fruition, that's when the allocations would occur. We didn't want to um be able to to really hold up the actual planning um development of the effort. Um, and so we're asking for approval for the up to amount uh with the uh primary commitment to always be delicious with the funds as it relates to building uh out this program in particular. I will say in terms of the co-investment.
Just to ask you, just to follow up on that. So you're saying that the money wouldn't be distributed until these internships are established kind of on a rolling basis?
So I will say that there are administration startup costs, but they are not of the 1.9 million completely, right? So we have startup costs as it relates to uh starting uh registering the program, but also administering uh and the resources support. We have the employer engagement efforts, but again, that won't exhaust the entire 1.9 million. But what it will do is give us the framework and the foundation to be able to build uh out uh this program. And it's uh, you know, and it's a, you know, uh, to to fruition, if you will. You, you know, I think a part of this is really making uh the initial kind of seed investment, if you will, to establish uh the California Workforce Accelerator. What we also look forward to is pulling grants for uh the future of the program. But also as other community colleges participate, we also will be um, you know, allocating some level of budget responsibility as the program grows.
Okay, does that mean that if other colleges participate, they're gonna they're gonna provide funding to?
There will be, there, you know, as other uh community colleges are on board, there will be uh resource requirements um from from them, whether that be uh both compensation, resource, physical assets. We will be able to assess that uh moving forward.
Does that mean that this 1.9 million might last a lot longer than 11 months?
I I oh, absolutely. You absolutely. And so a part of the the commitment for the contract was really to establish both the relationship and to have agreement uh at the up to amount would be if we reached the the various milestones listed in the agreement, right? And so we tie it to that particularly because we want to show efficacy. I think the word was mentioned um across the board. We want to be able to do that as we move forward. Appreciate that.
And I'll just say, as long as I'm on this, uh, and GoBiz is creating, is providing the connections, but no money.
Well, GoBiz is sourcing both the employers, um, but also working with the employers, uh, those that want to bring business from offshore onto shore, assessing uh E T P employer training provider um of funding for them to actually have both incumbent workers uh access and also uh to hire uh some of these students as well. And so the state of California offers some some types of subsidies for companies that would invest in partnerships uh of this nature.
Michael, can you please explain what an E T P is? Let's not talk about acronyms.
I apologize. Uh, Ms. Haynes always gets on us for that. Hey, um, E T P is the employer uh training uh panel. Uh, that is a uh a a department under uh the Labor and Workforce Development Agencies that works hand in hand with employers, both incumbent uh as well as a new employees and provides them a subsidy for investing in California, for moving their businesses into California and hiring California workers. So um we are part of our partnership is very, very important with GoBiz because they give us that direct access and they will handle those employer uh relationships and ensuring that they're fully prepared to engage in this partnership.
But the one thing I'll also add in in terms of the dollar amount is um if we think, look at this as a as a building shared cost model over time. Um, we also see the opportunity that building this kind of infrastructure and this kind of uh programmatic approach allows us to pull down from other sources. So it positions us well to be competitive for different streams of funding, especially federal streams of funding, industry specific funds, things like that. So that's not reflected in the in the budget appendices, but that's the objective of beyond the pilot period, how something moves from pilot to scale.
I guess just the last thing, I mean, our money is now being, is going to be used to help all the community colleges, uh, which I know is like part of our mission.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah. So it's not a gift, though, to other institutions. I think this is important to to draw a distinction between. What we're illustrating is the benefit that it can have to other community colleges who can be expanded to grow and participate over time. So if we build the kind of piping that we're building, which is beneficial primarily for our users, our our Calbright students, we can also see how this mechanism and that that um aperture could be open for participation from other institutions as well. So it doesn't have to be just wholly uh for our benefit.
The the presentation said a bunch of community colleges are already doing this. So have they invested in the startup costs that Mike that Michael just talked about?
So so not in the accelerator, maybe you can clarify or Eddie can clarify what.
Yeah, um, these were through previous workforce programs. Oh, sorry, I'm late.
I'm so sorry. I was I was on mute. I apologize, uh, Mr. Lynn. Just to directly answer the question, I, you know, um, the California Workforce Accelerator brings a statewide model uh to bear. Both the employer model that has the direct access to to GoBiz, uh, which is uh not uh existing today and brings the resources to bear uh of both the design and and creates the asset for the state of California. You know, uh, uh, Mr. Lynn would probably speak to the relationships that do correct one to one relationships with district that does not elevate and does not bring uh the state of California to bear uh to make this more of a state wide effort, uh, if you will. But Mr. Lynn, uh, feel free to speak to any of the uh relationships you have with the other community colleges.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, so through previous workforce projects uh with uh similar type goals, we were able to install the Nexus Edge app in Canvas at 60 California community colleges. And we're able to really show, you've talked about that number previously about reaching 20,000 students. We're able to show that using the process that we developed during that. We're able to achieve that level of scale through prior workforce project. So this is something that we've been comfortable doing specifically within the system for a number of years. I also would like to address um how it's helpful that we have a lot of other uh community colleges involved from an employer perspective. When you start working with employers, uh, like the Googles, the cities, um, things like that, it really helps them want to get involved more uh when there's a larger student population. So that actually benefits Calbright as well by having that sort of leverage as a large system to be able to bring on these types of employers.
Thank you. Thank you.
My only comment on it is, and I I take what uh trustee Epstein is saying, uh, you know, under advisement, it is a lot of money. But I also think as a board, we often talk about economic mobility. Um, what we don't talk a lot about is social capital. And it is really a missing piece. Uh, and as you guys know, I've been in a reflective mood and I think of myself, which is as a young person, I grew up in West Sacramento. I had no connections to anyone or anything. And so often in a disadvantaged community, that internship, that apprenticeship, to quote my dad, it's not what you know, it's who you know, um, is really imperative. And you know, we don't talk about social capital. And you know, the fact of the matter is, is if we want to reach true equity, we have to. And um, I'm okay with us potentially, you know, planting the seeds for our sister institutions to understand that this is really a key piece um of the puzzle to give people kind of that trajectory that we're hoping for. Um, and in some ways, I do think um Calbright is the perfect place because we're doing things so different. Um, and so obviously I think, you know, we'll want to hear an update on how it's going. But I think it's really exciting to kind of get at that piece, which is a little bit harder uh to address.
I will just double down on that point because I uh there I can share out after this meeting, but there's uh some great work that Raj Chetty uh and the team at Harvard have done around understanding the important relationship between areas of opportunity where economic mobility exists. And then uh, you know, how that social capital as a as a driver in that specific way uh of economic mobility um is constrained in in some ways geographically. So when we think about in those areas that are underserved, as we would call them, what are the primary points of opportunity that exist? And how do we better fill out and leverage relationships with employers in in effective and in efficient manner? We can't go one to one to small and midsize firms to to sort of um hit at this problem in a way that that makes sense. And um, you know, the the thing that I've sort of been thinking about and reflecting on is this idea of social capital. Like it's actually what fills your resume. So when folks uh who have uh had limited work experience or work experience outside of the new field they might be training for with a with an industry recognized certification they might get at Calbright, that work experience piece is more than just a nice to have, it's a need to have. And so as we discover that finding more and more ways that we can create spaces for that within the learning experience and for more students at Calbright continues to be a top priority.
I just want to add to your comments, President Costa. I say as a career counselor, it's not who you know, it's who knows you. So giving students that opportunity to demonstrate their skills is really what seals the deal for them to build a pathway to the future. So I really appreciate this effort. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, colleagues. Uh, with that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Okay, colleagues, it's motion and second time.
So moved.
Okay, I'm gonna say Villa Vicencio with the motion and Rawlings with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Casey Chang.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Harry Legrand.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
And Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
Motion carries President Costa.
Great. Wonderful. We will hear from you again. Uh, next up, we're going to move to the information and reports section of the agenda. I'm going to welcome up our vice president of learning and instruction again. And the item is direct assessment model, which we previewed a little bit earlier, so.
Thank you. And I'm back and I'm actually going to be joined um by my dynamic dean, uh, Dr. Kertiva Monroe Jones. He was our dean of learning innovation, so she'll be presenting with me um a bit later. But it was actually really nice to hear the engaging conversation and talking about the connections to real world and workforce and thinking about the model that we're building because it really just dovetails so nicely to the work that we're doing. So next slide, please. So what I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about is the direct assessment framework. We'll talk through the values for student, the value and benefit for students as well as for instructors, give you kind of a 50,000 foot overview of the model and then actually walk you through some of the technology that we have been implementing. And like I said, we'll go live uh tomorrow. Next slide, please. So I always like to start with a little context and framing, but really it's the opportunity to think about this world. And obviously you guys can all imagine it because you are here. But thinking about an educational model where prior knowledge really um and acknowledging the strengths of students and then supplementing what they don't know is kind of at the foundation of how we educate and help students move forward in their life and career. And then really thinking about how how would that have experience? Or how could it help inform your either your personal and professional journey? And so, you know, this is really the framework that we work with as we started building out our model. So next slide, please. So direct assessment, and we talk a lot about it, but really what it is, and uh click through this part, sorry, Terry. Yes. No, all right. Uh, so it direct assessment, it really evaluates whether students have mastered the competencies they're expected to learn. And unlike traditional methods that may rely heavily on passive forms of assessment, direct assessment really requires active demonstration of skills. Next, please. So it ensures that the evaluation are closely aligned with the competencies that are tended to be measured. And so this method around allows educators to verify not just theoretical understanding, but practical application. Next. And as we've been talking, that real world applicability, it's really about focusing on projects and simulations that help students prepare for real life challenges. It bridges the gap between academic theories and practical application by making education more relevant to professional environments. Next. Also contributing to the framework is personalized feedback. And the method really helps to provide feedback on individual performances, helping students understand their strengths and areas of improvement. So that personalized feedback is really crucial to the learning and it helps guide students on how to enhance their skills effectively. Next. And we know students are more engaged when they are actually able to uh see direct relevance from what they're learning in their coursework to real world situations. And so direct assessment really helps foster a learning environment where students feel their educational activities are meaningful. And then last but not least is the flexibility of the model. And we know from our students that they really enjoy the ability to go as fast as or as slow as they need to go as they're learning, and it's based on life circumstances. And then also I think direct direct assessment encourages education and institutions to really truly innovate by developing new methods to evaluate competencies. Next slide. So as we move forward with our model, we're really focusing on having direct assessments that, like I said, are relevant and real world application. So students will engage in specific projects that are that require them to apply knowledge and skills and real world experiences. For example, with our project management, uh, students are developing project plans with local businesses and then applying what lessons in communication, strategy formation, and even budgeting uh that they learn throughout their program. Another example is simulations. Uh, and this is really allows an environment, a safe environment where students are able to navigate complex situations. In our program, specifically cybersecurity, students uh would be able to identify and present prevent a cyber attack in actually simulated environment, which is a little safer than doing it in the real world. And then lastly, uh, for some of our exams, there are performance based assessments that really involve open ended questions that require application of knowledge rather than just rote recall. So an example would be in our I T support program, a student would be required to describe and design a motherboard after being provided specific parameters during timed exams. So I'm going to actually hand it over to uh Dr. Monroe and who's going to walk us through the benefits for students and instructors.
Thank you. This is the part of the conversation where we really transition to the benefits of competency based education for student, for faculty. We will also look at the highlights of the competency based education model. And then finally, we'll give you a live demonstration of the model in live and in color. Next. The competency based education model. The competency based education model really recognizes prior learning experiences that the students have. And this is, this is given through the demonstration of skills. As mentioned earlier, the demonstration of skills is packaged into direct assessments. Those direct assessments can be projects, simulations and or exams. These skills, next. These skills really showcase the students diverse experiences. Next. Allowing the students to bypass skills they know and really zoom in on new skills, which accelerates the students' learning. This also allows faculty to see the evolution of how students are learning throughout the student process. Next slide, please. In addition, for faculty being able to see the evolution of students' learning, this is actually realized by giving faculty a front row seat, giving them access to that individual student data as well as the class average within a course and the progress the students are making. This progress can be shown through two lenses. The first lens is the percentage of completion. How much of a direct assessment are students completing? The second lens is the percentage of performance, the achievement level of the assessment. These, this type of progress gives students a deeper understanding of how students are learning and an opportunity to improve the impact of learning as students progress throughout the model. Next, please. Students' learning in this model really focuses on the alignment of academic skills and industry skills. These industry skills are pulled from light cast data. So that means all of our assessments in this model are directly connected to industry skills. By doing that, Calbright is able to create an individualized student pathway in which the students are focusing on the skills they, the skills they need to improve in or skills, new skills that they need to learn. This individualized pathway consists of three types of assessments. Pre-assessments, formative assessments, and summative assessments. The pre-assessment score, whether it's mastery or non-mastery, triggers the student's learning pathway. So if a student, when the student masters a pre-assessment, their pathway takes them directly to a summative assessment. And the summative assessment requires them to demonstrate a skill before moving along the personalized pathway. Students who show a non-mastery of the pre-assessment are promoted to formative lessons. These formative lessons give students an opportunity to practice a skill before moving to a summative assessment in which they will be required to demonstrate the skill. The mastery of all of these summative skills really are aligned to professional badges. And these professional badges show students not only the academic skills they've mastered, but also the industry skill. And these professional badges can be shared out through social media and they can be shared with prospective employers. The benefit of these professional badges is that, you know, employers are really able to hone in on the industry skills students have mastered and what they know. And they can figure out how that benefits their business. Now we're going to transition to a live demonstration so you can see these personalized pathways.
All right. So while Katriva brings up her screen, and actually she's going to be driving while I walk you through the model. Just to kind of highlight, I would say very similar to not having a lot of direct assessment experts out there. It is also, I would say, a challenge when you think about the technology to support the model. And so our model is really built and based on the framework that we've designed and not necessarily, I would say, a direct reflection of the capabilities of the technology. So this has been, I would say, a labor of love and some innovative creativity to bring this to fruition. So when a student enters, and this example is for our data analysis program. So when a student enters and lands on the homepage, they will be able to see all the competencies that they are being assessed in this particular course. And then a student can jump from the, directly into the competency. And there they'll have like a welcome and introduction to what they're going to be learning, a little bit an overview of some of the content items. And they would be first taking a pre-assessment, as was previously mentioned. And then from that pre-assessment score, either students are being provided with all of the formative and content and/or they would be moved directly to the summative assessment. So if they score 80% or higher, we know that students have really mastered the content. They still have access to all of it, but it's grayed out. So they're not necessarily required to go through any of that content. And then they can move directly to that final project. If a student scores less than 80%, then what you're doing is moving them to the areas where they need to learn more of. And then they have opportunities to review content as well as practice before they move to the summative assessment. So that's kind of what puts them on that personalized pathway through the model versus just an expectation that they're doing everything directly within that course. One of the other kind of key areas to highlight is the credentials, which Katriva mentioned. And these are the badges that students are able to see that they can earn throughout the program pathway. And so after each competency, students have an opportunity to earn a badge. And the thing that is pretty impressive about the badges is they are able to export the badge. As was previously mentioned, they can add it to their portfolio, they can share it on LinkedIn. And then the badge really conveys what the students did to master that competency as well as attaches evidence. So if I'm an employer and I really want to know, did Katriva earn this badge? What did she do to earn it? Then I would be able to see directly what that looks like. And so we're really helping to build their portfolio and their resume as they move through our program. So that's some of the highlights from the student side. And then highlighting the instructor side, as we had mentioned, it's really thinking about those personalized opportunities to engage instructors and helping them provide targeted information to students. And so one of the things that we did, we brought in a content management system called Skillways. And we have linked all of our skills to formative assessments, that pre-assessment, as well as to summative. And so as students are moving through the pathway, you're able to see where students have mastered those skills, where they maybe are falling a little bit short. Maybe they've attempted to master, but they haven't completely mastered. And so as an instructor, you can jump in and have a very engaging conversation because you know exactly where students are, exactly where they're struggling or excelling. And then you can really, you know, take time to meet with them one on one, connect them to a tutor. But it's a lot more targeted, an engagement and conversation to help students move forward than perhaps if you didn't have this level of insights. And so we can see from a very specific student view, you could actually scale out and see from a course view. So you can see how all of your students are performing as well. And that can also then help us even inform future design of the program, how we think about interventions within the program, and even some of the other key components along that pathway. But just, I know I have a limited amount of time, so we were just kind of giving you the high level view of what it looks like. But really impressed by our, the, the work behind the scenes that the team has done to get us this far. It's a lot of mapping, aligning, tagging to be able to pull out this level of data. So I will stop there and then answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Questions, comments, board member Haines?
So thank you for the presentation. There is a point where you said that this is a process that also builds a portfolio of skills as well that's individualized. And so so at the end, if one, if a student is, is really strong in a particular area, that would be highlighted. Would it be highlighted in a different way? They might have met a lot of the criteria, but they may have excelled. Does it differentiate that kind of way? Or does, or is it, they've just met these levels of skills?
So I would say for, because of the competency based education model, students will have to master, right? All the competencies as they move through the program. As a student, perhaps I decide that there's an artifact that conveys my level of mastery at a higher level than something else I've completed in the program. I can choose to make that public so it is visible to employers as I am sending and sharing out my resume. So students actually have some control over that ability. Currently, the way that we are, I guess you could say assessing is just at the level of mastery. So we don't have like a mastery plus or mastery plus plus. It's either you've met it or you haven't met it.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure. Board member LaGrande has his hand raised and then we'll go to board member Villa Vicencio.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is really helpful. Just a couple of comments. One is that given the fact that there's no bricks and mortar campus, I'm really impressed with the direct access to student and the engagement that you're having with them. But I think it's, it's somewhat almost seems better than what you'd get when you're on a bricks and mortar campus. So this program seems really exciting to me. The second question, and maybe a second comment, it may be more of a question. After they complete this, it's just something that would become, I know they've been talking more about skill based resumes or portfolios that they can use here with employers or help them kind of fill out their resumes more. Is that part of the structure here as well?
Yes. And actually, my next presentation, I will even be able to highlight that a little bit more. But we are really engaging with a lot of like work based opportunities for students and either in bringing in those direct projects as part of the summatives. So we have a partnership with Ripein specifically for our project management program where students are matched with employers and completing projects where they will be able to get directly employer feedback as well as like a letter of reference from that employer as they're completing the projects. But really the goal of anything that we're doing is to create those real world applications for students. So as they build that resume, they will actually have even feedback from employers. Very similar to the Nexus Edge model as well. So trying to find as many of those opportunities as possible to integrate within our programs.
I'm excited about the program, but I'm also maybe skeptical as well, not in a negative way. Maybe my question asks you to take a look at some of the blind spots. Because when I'm thinking about assessments, I go back to AB 705, AB 1705. Or, you know, of, of students, at least from an equitable, from, from an equitable perspective, from equity perspective, we really don't want to see students left behind.
Right.
And obviously I think this is a unique and very innovative model because you're not using grades. You're not using, you know, it is creating a mastery type portfolio as you're mentioning. But maybe if you can speak to, yeah, I guess those, those blind spots and just making sure that, that, that when students are actually in this process, that they are not left behind and that we're not, we're not disadvantaging them in any way.
Right. Absolutely. And I actually love this question. One of the things that we think about when we build, design and think about the data to inform the program and the learning is thinking about equitable learning. And so it's really essential that all students have that same learning opportunity, but they are also achieving at that same rate. And one of the things that I think that online education does, access to really this level of data is to help us identify when we see gaps in that learning process. And when we're able to see those gaps, then we can actually do something and intervene. And so it's something that we closely watch. We are actually pulling outcomes assessment data and we do it on a quarterly basis. And we're looking at the level of achievement of all competencies for all students to ensure that no students are being left behind. And that we are ensuring that any of our students from marginalized populations are achieving at the same rate, at the same level as any of our other students. And so I think it's something that the team is very passionate about. Clearly I'm very passionate about it as well. And so it's something that we will continue to monitor. And I think, you know, it, the one thing about online education, it's really that level of data that you get that you don't get when you sit in front of a classroom, right? You don't know if the students daydreaming, you don't know what they're doing, how much homework they've done. But when you really start to be able to dive in and pull out that data, you can really, really truly, from an instructional standpoint, and then even I would say from an intervention standpoint, have those really rich conversations with students.
No, I really appreciate the, sort of the low risk assessment. In a way, maybe I'm defining it, you know, putting words in your mouth, but I just feel like as a student, if I do fail or not meet that certain competency, it's not the end of the world. I will get that support that is needed to get me, to get me there. So I really appreciate sort of the, your comment about, again, those interventions that faculty will, will play in helping that student get to that level. And I think from an equity, again, perspective, that is, that is wonderful for our, for our students. So, so thank you for that clarification.
My pleasure.
And I just have to speak up based on your comments because, you know, my view of 705 and 1705 is really about gatekeeping. It was a very traditional higher ed model, completely centered in Western European concept of education. And this conversely is really presenting an opportunity that doesn't exist in higher ed right now, right? To take your life skills, your employment skills and translate that into the context of higher ed. And so, you know, I agree, I think it's, it's difficult. This work before us is difficult because we have a model in which employers and others recognize kind of the traditional higher ed model. But hopefully we're giving people more opportunity here, not less. So thank you for those comments. I appreciate them. Colleagues, are there any other questions or comments on this item? Is there any public comment on the item?
There was no public comment.
Great. Well, you're in the hot seat again. Next is item 5.2, durable skills framework.
All right. And hopefully you guys are not sick of me yet. But I would say that we had a very productive spring and I think I might've been a little overly zealous to kind of share all of these great work that the team has been doing. So I hope you will indulge me for one final presentation. And this is our durable skills framework that we worked on. And so next slide, please. I'll just give you a little bit of what I hope to. The objective of the presentation, hope of what we leave with is kind of a shared definition and characteristics of durable skills. Really reinforcing the importance of those to the workforce. And thinking about, while sharing our specific Calbright's durable skill framework and then opportunities that students will have to develop those skills and then really the continuous alignment. And just a special thank you to, again, Dr. Monroe, Dr. Butlin, Jessica Shade and Ashley Odell, who really helped participate in this process over the spring semester and really provided guidance and insight as we built out the framework. So next slide, please. All right. So durable skills and next, also known as essential skills or soft skills. And if you could click through Terry a couple more times, there we go. You might've heard them called soft skills, you might've heard them called essential skills. And we are landing on the word one more click, durable skills. And they are increasingly recognized as vital for success in today's workforce. And these skills such as communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and even intercultural fluency are essential across all industries and job roles. And unlike technical skills, which may become obsolete with technical, technological advances, durable skills remain relevant and valuable throughout one's career. And employers highly value these skills as they continue to, to be a productive, adaptable and collaborative work environment. And durable skills are really critical in the workforce as they able, enable individuals to navigate complex work environments, lead teams and contribute to positive organizational cultures. These skills help employees to communicate effectively, solve problems creatively and adapt to change. And all of this we know is essential for long-term career success and organizational growth. Next slide. So we know that durable skills really differ from technical skills. They're not specific to particular job or industry. And while technical, technical skills can be learned and measured through certifications and degrees, durable skills are often associated with personal attributes and are developed over time through experience and practice. So employers, like I mentioned previously, they're highly valuable, value, excuse me, highly value these skills. And we're really taking a careful and intentional approach to ensuring that all of our programs have these integrated within, within each of the offering, student offerings. Next slide. So at the start of 2024, Calbright engaged with a consultant, the Bolton Learning Group, to research, identify, seek input and kind of coalesce on Calbright's 10 durable skills. We looked at nationally normed durable skills from America's, America Succeeds, 21st Century Labs, and even the National Association for Continuing Education to draft a list of these skills. And then after completing the initial research, an internal working group was created to engage in the process. And we met with representation from faculty, career services, student success, workforce and institutional research. And then through collective input, we landed on the list of 10 durable skills that you see before you. Two durable skills I really would like to highlight. One of those is being digital savvy and the other one is emotional intelligence or EQ. And in a world that we know is And in a world that we know is rapidly growing and our dependencies are in artificial intelligence, we wanted to ensure that our students are comfortable using a variety of digital platforms and are competent and comfortable using AI and understanding its possibilities. So what we did is making sure that we are including self-awareness. We're making sure that students are leaving with that information for to be digital savvy and AI-ready. And then also thinking about the emotional intelligence that's needed to include self-awareness, self-management and self and social awareness as well. So what we did in next slide is we go from our 10 durable skills and then really thinking about what are those competencies that we would need to be able to see to assess those skills. And then from there, we go from competencies to actually the observable behaviors that we that would be we would be able to validate that students had mastered those. So this level of detail really allows us to build assessments that allow students to show these skills. And we want students to be able to describe what they can do and show evidence as they build their portfolios and earn badges. And this also has helped us create a shared language and understanding across departments. So from this framework, we then develop assessments. And actually, at the next slide, I'll be able to provide you a brief sample of a scenario-based assessment that a student would engage with as they complete their program. So next slide, and if you want to hit play, Terry.
You recently spoke with your cousin Joe about your career plans. Joe works at Lago del Oso Community Health in the HR department. Joe thought that you might be interested in working at a hospital or medical center too. He explained that hospitals and medical centers need support from many different areas, such as administration and technology, to accomplish their core mission, taking care of patients. Joe offered to arrange an informational interview with his supervisor, Linda, to help you find out more about these types of opportunities. You thought that sounded like a great idea. Joe just texted, Linda has agreed to meet with you. She's very busy, so you want to make the most of your limited time together by reviewing the goals of an informational interview and practicing ahead of time. Now it's your turn to practice. When you're ready, record your informational interview questions for Linda at Lago del Oso Community Health.
So this is an example of one of our assessments that we would build and provide students for oral communication. And there's multiple components of that, but we want it to be as engaging as possible. So students kind of feel like they're in the real world, they're being responsive. But then we're also taking time to have students demonstrate, right? We're going to either have them speak, have them show versus just doing a written assessment and providing like an essay assignment. So that's just one example. And most of our durable skill assessments have multiple parts. And so students are doing these scenario-based projects, getting feedback and then continuing to build those durable skills over time. Next slide, please.
You recently spoke with your cousin Joe.
It's a great video.
About your career plans. Joe worked, you recently spoke with your cousin Joe about your career plans.
I wonder if you have to, there you go. That'll be forever in your mind for the rest of the day. I love it. All right. So next up with our durable skills is really to ensure that we have the appropriate durable skills aligned throughout all of our curriculum. And we're also creating options for students to practice and acquire durable skills beyond what is integrated in their program. So learning and instruction is leaning on our in-house faculty expertise to continue to develop real-world scenario-based assessments. We're also partnering with career services and our academic career counselors to ensure alignment in language and resources. And we're continuing to identify work-based learning opportunities, such as the partnership with Nexus Edge and Ripen, which I previously mentioned, to integrate these opportunities and allow students to further enhance and develop their durable skills. And we believe alignment across these departments will recreate the best opportunity and structure for our students. And that's it for durable skills, but happy to answer any questions.
Well, this is a unique, we have our CEO with a question, so I'm going to defer to her.
Oh, you have a question?
My question is, did we just make up these 10 durable skills? Or sort of how did we know these were what the in-demand skills were?
Oh, thank you. So one of the other things that we did in the process is we did meet with individuals from the LA Commerce of Labor, if I'm saying that correctly. And we did seek their input to verify that these were the durable skills that they also were looking for. And we also, as we met with our advisory councils for each of our programs, we also got their input around these durable skills. So multiple layers of looking at kind of national norm durable skills, but then also validating these by looking at the labor of commerce as well as advisory councils. So thank you, President Menon, for that question.
Nice clarifying question. Vice President Aguinaldo.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the nomenclature around durable skills. Because you said here that it was also referred to as soft skills or transferable skills, but I would argue that this was previously called intangible or thing that you either have it or you don't. And I bet there's an equity spin to that where you don't know what you're missing if you're not calling it out. So I just wanted to say thank you for highlighting the things that are now truly leveling the playing field from an equity perspective. I don't have a question, just a congratulations on that.
Great, thank you. I have board member LeGrand with his hand raised and then we'll go to board member Haynes.
Yeah, once again, I just want to thank you for that, for the presentation. I'm happy to see too the fact these are really the skills that employers don't have the time to try to train or teach. And I know when I was working, when I was in student housing, I would have employers all the time calling me about who my RAs were because they wanted to hire RAs because they possessed many of those durable skills, part of their training program that they were looking for and didn't have time to really get their skill sets up in those durable skills as has shown here. So I think it's really forward-thinking. I think it really is a game changer. And I think employers are going to be really happy to see our students having that as part of their foundation when they come into the workforce. And having mostly intelligence as a part of that is just like an excellent thing. I had Peter Block come and talk to us at one time about the stewardship and some of those other things that are important when you're running, working in an environment like that. So thank you again for the foresight on that.
So just an observation, I think I did really well when I put myself against the little blocks where it says emotional intelligence. I think, but when we got down to durable skills, there were a couple that I I don't know that I have digital savvy. But that has to do with age and where I came into computers possibly. But it did spark in me the question of our older adult learners who may not have had the access to two computers in the same way that my granddaughters have access to it. And it's just, it's part of their thinking on how they think about things. And so the question really is, is there a way to tease that out for for our adult learners that may have challenges? I don't want to call it a problem, but challenges, is it sensitive enough relative to the competency-based education to tease that out and say, and help relative to that? To some of these things that they may not have.
Right, absolutely. And I would say by leveraging our pre-assessments, that will give us the opportunity to identify where students might be struggling or perhaps are not as technologically ready as some of our other students. And what we do have is we have tutors available, peer tutors. And then we also have individuals that are very focused on technical support for students because we have identified where students do need a little bit more assistance. You know, we support older students and they do often come with a little bit of like the nervousness of being comfortable around a computer. And so I do think the CBE model itself helps identify that where you're not expecting everybody to walk in at the same level or playing field, but really is that assessment and opportunities to support students in what they need.
And I will also say, this is where I'll channel Dawn Orth for a second, who runs Student Support and Support. Because the idea of a lot of the integrated support experiences that students have at different points in their journey from the time that we first bring them in and onboard them is all meant to provide that kind of ease. So not just the formal assessment and the the sort of academic validation of the skills, but the opportunity to continue to be supported in exercising that self-efficacy and creating this, you know, for lack of a better word, a safe space for you to acquire those digital skills that becomes really an important part of the the customer experience or the student experience side of things.
There's a great book called The Speed of Trust and they talk about trust being two components, character and competence. So someone might be a good person, but they don't have the competency. So I was looking at point six integrity and reliability. I really think there should be a lot about the character development. Because you might have the competencies, but you also have the the trust, reliability, the intention. You know, could you maybe elaborate on point six a little bit about, you know, how do you, you know, you have the competencies on one side, but how do we develop the character?
And I would say that's over time and practice. So that is something, as we think about the integration of these, we know it's not a one and done, but it's something that has to be visited and revisited for students. So yes, that one is a challenging one. And as we chose, we know that that's an important durable skill. But as we think about, you know, how is that being assessed? It's trying to create those opportunities where students are like placed in those scenarios where they're able to respond and show some evidence that would convey or demonstrate integrity and reliability. But we know that it will be a skill that has to be learned over time. So it would be like integrated or kind of woven throughout a program versus like, oh, I'm showing integrity and reliability at just a point in time. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Pam's cutting in line, you guys know.
I'm so sorry. So I have a dear friend in Boston and she does a lot of advocacy work, especially in communities of color and immigrant communities. And one of the challenges for for so many, if you're not, if you have not been in stable work, the idea of getting someplace on time can be challenging and problematic. And so I'm wondering, thank you so much for your question, this issue around reliability. You know, all of this is online and maybe that's that's the thing. It's it's online and many of the jobs are online. But if you have to, how do you, how do you translate that into a job in which you now have to go into an office and may be more rigid? Will, will, will that be tested? How is that tested in an online environment? Or is it?
Yeah, hmm. I don't know if we specifically test for like the on-time perhaps for like a a job requirement, but I would say when I think about like reliability and perhaps in any educational model, it's, you know, you have a due date or and/or you have an anticipated kind of opportunity to submit something that would show reliability, right? Like it's the ability to complete a task. But I know that when partnering with like either our faculty from workforce or our career services, they are having those conversations with students. And they are talking about like the importance of job readiness related to showing up on time and/or I would say like being reliable, right? Like not calling out often. So some of those skills are kind of acquired, not necessarily through the program, but through those conversations and engagement with some of our support services as well.
I just would add an editorial on my part. I work for an airline and I didn't grow up with an on-time mom. And so I would be one or two minutes late, but you had to click that thing. And so I got called on the carpet and what was told to me was it is better to be sick and not show up than to be a few minutes late to your job because that was, what's the word? Habitual. And that was, and that was a characteristic that was not sort of acceptable in in the business community. And so that's the reason why I kind of, never mind. I just told you about me. I'm on time now. I'm recovering.
Well, let the record note, she was not here when I gavelled in. To the door, I didn't see a thing. We did hear her from the lobby. Her here was right on time.
Trustee Villa Vicencio followed by trustee Epstein.
Thank you. About five years ago, our former college president, Dr. Kathy Hart, made this an emphasis to teach our students soft skills. And obviously, we just talked about it during convocation, but there wasn't necessarily a structure to teach these things. I made it a point as a faculty member, I know when, well, let me just preface it this way. All of our students need this. And so as a faculty member during office hour, just to share with you some some my anecdotal experience, you know, when when students come to me looking for internships, I'm the one teaching them, or I'd like, have you done informational interviews? And they're like, what is an informational interview? And they don't know what it is. And, you know, we've had conversations about social capital and and in politics, we all know, given I teach political science, we're all political anyway in this room, relationships are so important to to build and open those opportunities. And so I guess it's not necessarily a question, but it just really is a comment. I feel like our students definitely need to be taught this and perhaps, and I don't know if my colleague, you know, board member Adrian can can speak to counselors, some certain counseling classes that teach about career preparation or whatnot, but not all students are required to take that. And I feel like Calbright could be leading the way here for our system to really create a program, this initiative here, that could filter all the way down. Because clearly our students, not just our adult learners, but those coming directly out of high school truly need these skills. And we all know, so the impacts of COVID too. And how that was a challenge to many of our students and continues to be. And how these soft skills could help them address those challenges. So just my comment. Thank you.
No, thank you.
So this is kind of self-indulgent and has nothing to do with what we're talking about. But I remember Haynes' comment that she maybe wasn't quite up to speed on the technical competencies. I, as I was reading the oral communication competencies, things like speaks logically and coherently and conveys information accurately and supports points with evidence, et cetera. I know there's at least a couple of candidates for president that have difficulty meeting this criteria. And so I wouldn't worry if if you don't feel that you have made that, covered that bar.
Trustee Ching.
Thank you for your presentation. I think I like the reframing, much like Vice President Aguinaldo said, was reframing it from soft skills to durable skills because I think soft skills comes with the, well, yeah, you either have it or you don't. And I think especially as a student in my oral communications class at my community college, public speaking, I felt comfortable in it, but I wasn't very confident in it. And something that my professor said was like, yes, it's considered a soft skill, but it's so important. And I think framing it with the word soft makes it seem like, oh, well, like you'll just, you'll figure it out. And I think that I just like this very much. And also connecting it back to like being a student and not really understanding how industry works and not understanding the skills. Just yesterday, I was asking member Villa Vicencio about how I could figure out what I want to specialize in. And he recommended connecting with people in industry. And I think doing these interviews of the one that you just showed in the video is something that as a student I would have not known to do if someone hadn't recommended that I do that. Because I think cold emailing or reaching out to people is very intimidating. But having those durable skills, like I guess empowers me as a student to feel confident in doing that. Thank you.
Well, since I got called out as a counselor, I'll give my perspective. When I saw the durable skills, the very first four are actually in direct alignment with the minimum admissions requirements for our transfer students to get admitted into a Cal State. And they call them the golden four. And so I thought that was really interesting because a lot of our students who choose other pathways that don't involve transfer may or may not get all of these durable skills covered in their journey. So I think it's really wonderful that no matter what particular major or skill that a student is learning or whatever particular career path they're on, all of these durable skills are going to be useful. And I think it's great that you all are focusing on this and ensuring that those students are going to have those things.
Thank you so much.
I like the durable skills, but there's one element that I think is missing. Perhaps you can add it to number seven, collaboration, is negotiation. Whether you're negotiating with your spouse, your sibling, you're in your business. Negotiation is a very important skill. And I think these durable skills are very important, but that's also something we should emphasize. There is a very famous program in negotiation at Harvard Law School that's been doing it for 40-plus years. And I think tying some negotiation is something that can really help the students succeed. And I think at tying some negotiation is something that can really help the students succeed, whether negotiating a salary, negotiating a raise or or whatnot. You know, the critical thinking I think is important, but you got to think, act and do. So I think also making a decision. You know, my father once told me, whether it's a good decision or a bad decision, make a decision because you're going to learn from it. So taking that thinking to action and and learning from that to reflect, I I think is very important. But this is really a great presentation. So thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you. And yeah, I would love to pick your brain about negotiating. I need to get better at it. No, just kidding.
Let's negotiate.
Negotiate together.
My only comment is actually kind of pivoting off of something that trustee Haynes shared, which is I also think the how this is communicated and the who is really important. I mean, I think all of us in our young careers have called to the carpet, pulled aside, you know, whatever the term is that we're going to use. But it's really important, I think, who delivers that message and the tone. And, you know, I think especially for, you know, individuals who may not have had experience, and I certainly fell in this category, like it's shameful. You know, there there is a certain amount of self-confidence, et cetera. And so I also think, you know, like having a trusted professor or, you know, to have these conversations, I think it gets back to your point of trust. It really has to be kind of in a constructive place with a constructive person who is committed to your growth. And I think that is the most transformative thing for individuals in the workplace is having kind of that trusted mentor or, you know, role model. So anyway, you know, hopefully we will work on building this because I think so often in higher ed, we think about the what and not the who and the how. So anyway, with that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have five point three, which is the statewide government sector impact report. And we have our Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation back, our Director of Research and a representative from Lightcast.
Good morning. Once again, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the board, Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. And I'm excited to be joined by our Director of Research, Ben Doe, Director of Data Strategy and Effectiveness here at Calbright on the workforce team. Additionally, we're joined by Senior Economist and Research Manager from Lightcast, Dr. Rachel Siedelberg. As you recall, back in August twenty twenty-three, you approved a professional services agreement between Calbright College and a global leader in labor market analytics, Lightcast, to develop a first of its kind impact report highlighting the incredible opportunity we have in the state of California to better optimize and leverage California's public sector labor market in ways that open the doors of opportunity to more equitable workforce solutions for adult learners. Today, we're thrilled to share the report's significant findings, key recommendations, and our efforts to make this information not only accessible, but also actionable across the state of California for government officials, including state agencies and legislators, higher education leaders, community-serving organizations and nonprofits, workforce intermediaries, as well as employers. I'll now turn it over to Ben to walk us through the report and our next steps.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Ben Doe, Director of Research, Data Strategy and Effectiveness, and I'm happy to be here and see everybody again. I really am excited to talk and share some of the highlights of this report and our next steps. But first, I'd like to invite our guest, Dr. Rachel Siedelberg, economist and research manager from Lightcast, to share some broader context and the landscape to help us set the stage for our findings.
Thank you so much, Ben. It's a pleasure to be here. I hope you can all hear me just fine, calling in from Massachusetts. I, as Ben said, I'm a senior research manager, senior economist and former academic, actually, and the proud daughter of a community college department chair here in Massachusetts. And I taught at one during my graduate school day. So really thrilled to be here. We really had a wonderful time working with Calbright on this project. And we wanted to talk really quickly about kind of what's going on in the broader labor market from the side that we're seeing. As Lightcast, we scrape the internet for the universe of job postings or the near universe as best we can get, as well as social profiles and publicly available government data, both here in the United States and elsewhere. So a few things that I wanted to to set the stage with as we go through this report is that our economy and our labor market are facing some some challenges that have been coming for quite some time, but are unprecedented. First and foremost, the boomer generation, right? The boomer generation is going to reach the age of sixty-five, all of them, by twenty thirty, so not too far away. They have amassed wealth that will lead most of them out of the labor force because they can afford to do so, opening up a whole host of really critical jobs that we need to fill. Our economy has also switched to be far more service sector based than it ever has in the past. And we're seeing that in the job openings that we have today, over eight million of them. We still have a record low relatively to historic standards unemployment rate, even though it's picked up a couple of notches in recent months. And we've seen a lot of influence from immigrants in the United States in terms of their labor force participation and how many are taking jobs within our labor force that we simply do not have the individuals to take from the native born population. And to kind of put a little bit of a number to that of the labor labor force growth in the past month, the data that came out a couple of weeks ago, which got buried as it came out on July fifth, and we were all having a lot of fun with with our July fourth festivities. Eighty-five percent of the growth that took place in our labor force in the month of June came from non-native born workers. And that's incredible. It's up from about forty-five percent on average for the first five months of this year. So I did want to note that as well. Because as a country and pretty much across every every state, our birth rates have been very low for quite some time, far below the replacement rate. And if you're a Harry Potter fan, you'll get this one. You can't apparate a twenty-two-year-old, right? And then add them to the labor market. So these are some of the challenges that we are facing. We're going to have to look outside. Lastly, we're speaking a lot with companies and what I do primarily is work with very, very large corporations, both here in the U.S. and international corporations, about how to source the workers they need and how to be more creative in the years that come, both here domestically, every state across the country and across the world. And what it really comes down to is a lot of companies, the vast majority of them actually, are headed towards a skills-based hiring approach. And this goes as high and as large as the Walmarts of the world. It crosses every boundary in terms of industry. We're seeing it and have been seeing it for years now in advanced manufacturing. We're seeing it in the skilled trades, where before we used to see you need X degree. Now we're seeing a lot more, I need you to have skills X, Y, and Z. Both the the hard skills, but all the also those interpersonal skills that we were talking about just a few minutes ago. And I really thoroughly enjoyed that conversation. So these are just a couple of things that I wanted to point out. And I will be here throughout the presentation to answer any questions you might have and want to be a continued resource, as I love everything that you guys are doing in in this endeavor as as Calbright and and thoroughly always impressed by the California Community College system. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Siedelberg. And so, thank you. As you can hear, Dr. Siedelberg shared so many different conditions that are impacting our economy for quite some time. And and we're not an exception, of course, here in California. And as you could see on the slide, something that we presented also last year when we came and presented this research proposal is that in fact, when we look at the government sector and in California, that there may be roughly one point six million jobs that may be inaccessible to these skilled workers if we do not think about more creative ways in order to fill in this gap and to be able to find the labor source. So in the next slide, we could see that, again, when we look at these numbers, there is a disproportionate impact when it comes to special population, particularly our most vulnerable population, including people of color and women of all backgrounds, including women with degrees. And so this becomes a real true equity issue when we think about, you know, again, if we do not proceed and if we do not find more creative ways to lean into skills-based hiring and how we can address government sector hiring, that it could be very inequitable in in our system here. In the next slide, Dr. Siedelberg mentioned, and again, I think you are all aware of this, that there are now at least twenty-one states that have shifted towards a you know, eliminating a degree requirement to focus on the skills-based hiring. California also in the heels of Governor Newsom's executive order in order to prepare the workforce through this skills-based hiring, you know, has has been part of this movement. And the insight from this research, what we did and what the Lightcast team did was do that labor market scrub, review the different job postings. And we also conducted interviews and conversations with a handful of government sector and public sector employers, as well as intermediaries to understand what is some of the hiring practice, what does the labor market look like for the public system? And ensure how we can align our training programs and think about these real-world job requirements. So the next slide, we do have our first insight here. This probably will not come as a surprise to many of you in the room. The California state is the second largest employer in the state, making up nine percent of total employment. So this just highlights the the scale of this particular like this particular space for us. And our second insight in the next next slide is that while we see such a large opportunity in the number of job demands, we also see that public sector demand actually outpaces supply, which means that post pandemic, we are not filling in these jobs at the rate to many private agencies. So this is a huge issue when it comes to operational efficiencies, just being able to fill these jobs. And then finally, in the third slide, that you will highlight some insights here is that there is a demand when we look at government sector and public sector jobs for a variety of different education experiences, career background across industry. And when we look at entry and mid-level, many opportunities in the healthcare administrative role, IT roles and public safety. So the next slide, we start to dig into and look at the various region, regional opportunities. And our team at Lightcast highlighted some of the demand and employment includes these areas that are the top ones in these areas here. So Greater Los Angeles has a almost twenty-four percent, about twenty-four percent of California public sector postings, but make up about twenty-nine percent of public sector employment. And what you'll know in one of the things that we found was really interesting as we looked at these regional employment and demand is you'll see rural actually stand out here. So we did look at some of our rural communities. And in the rural communities, seventeen percent of sector posting, public sector postings fall within rural communities, making up about sixteen percent of that region. And when we look at high job posting intensities in this next slide, we could see that there is actually a very high and online posting intensity for public entry level and mid-level jobs in various career sectors. So these, this chart here, I know it's a little bit small, but we could just see some of the occupation names and the number of listings that we observed in just a few months. And and you could see that, again, it does cut across many different sectors, from frontline workers, a lot in IT, secretary admin work, as well as healthcare sector here. And then the next slide, again, kind of what we want to observe here is just the growing trend. Again, at some of the fastest and growing demands are in a number of different occupational areas and in different sectors. So not only technology operations, a lot in healthcare and other industries here. So many fast demand continues to grow in public sector. The following slide will actually look at the workforce. So in the research, we found that there are quite a few and, you know, and a substantial number of underutilized workers in California. And the underutilized worker we're categorizing and and what what Lightcast has done is separated out to not only the unemployed and the underemployed, but also the marginally attached population. So these are individuals who have actually removed themselves from the workforce. They're not currently looking for a job, but who may be willing and open to accepting a job in a career should an opportunity come up and should they have a way entry into it. And then the next slide, we'll see that regionally, you could, we broke down the and disaggregated the underutilized population. San Joaquin Valley is an area where there is quite a high number of underutilized individual. And and then you could see just across the various regions here. And I think the next slide is a really interesting one. Again, probably will not come as a surprise to us, but higher end utilization rates are observed for Hispanic and Black African-American populations. The very large column that you see on the right of this chart is the Native American indigenous population. So while a smaller proportion percentage-wise, pretty high up there. And so what does this mean for skills-based hiring and the potential? And so in the next slide, in the research, what Lightcast find found was that when they looked at the data of the talent pool, particularly those with less than typical higher education higher education, the requirements tend to have fifty percent overlapping skills for thirty percent of the industry's demanded occupation. So what that means is that the workforce actually carries these skills, at least fifty percent of them for these thirty at least thirty percent of really high demand occupations. And we see this as a really great opportunity for us to consider, how might we be able to think about, you know, more flexible ways or creative ways, as Dr. Siedelberg mentioned, to skill and create a pipeline for these employer employees to enter into the workforce and consider, are there ways that we can be more equitable by reconsidering, you know, the bachelor's degree requirement for a skills-based approach? With different ways that we can think about these. And and some of the occupations within that thirty percent includes occupations, important ones such as community health workers, information IT, information security analysts, community and social specialists and others that you can see here. So in the next slide, you know, as Lightcast presented some of the key findings, really, you know, what we're talking about here and what we've been talking about all morning and have been working towards is how do we create a future-ready workforce? And we saw that Dr. McCarty and a lot of what Calbright is doing on the learning and instruction side, setting our students up really to be able to gain and acquire the skills in a way that can demonstrated to employers. But we also have to think about these supply gaps, this opportunity that we saw in California's public sector being second largest in the state, but not being able to fill those those positions. Is there an opportunity for us to work more closely? Think about how we can address the hiring process, potentially some inefficiencies. We heard that many employers talked about just hurdles that does exist for workers, including some of the lengthy hiring process that you would have to go to through in order to gain entry into a public sector job. But then also finally, this underutilization component, how how can we really think about, you know, engaging? How how can we really think about, you know, engaging this underutilized population in a way that makes sense to them and encourages them and creates more incentives to think about coming back and and filling these public sector roles? And so in the next slide, you know, again, bringing up, just reminding, we we have the momentum on our side. There's a lot of movement in the state related to not only Governor Newsom's executive order, but then also in thinking about, you know, the collaboration, some of the work that we are already doing to expand access to training programs, to think about internships, micro internships, work-based learning, and continue to strengthen the partnership between educational institutions like Calbright and public agencies and employers, improve data collection and analysis. So being able to understand when students with certain skills, with badges, with credentials, which jobs they are actually going into and and succeeding in. And then also thinking about policy and practice review. Can we continue to have these conversations, you know, and and talk about the findings within this report? To think about how we can be more flexible in our policy and practice. And in the final slide, just to highlight, oh, sorry, this is some of the, I I got excited. The occupational programs that Calbright already offers that is aligned to many of the occupations that that we identified through this report as a potential for these government sector jobs here. And so, you know, again, there's momentum on our side. And what I wanted to share on this last slide is just some of the current and next steps that we are taking. And so earlier this year in May of 2024, Calbright did host a virtual statewide roundtable conversation. Included was President Menon and individuals from the Department of Labor, Deputy Secretary Abby Sne, as well as Adele Burns from the Department of Apprenticeships here, and also Arnie Sol from Next Gen Policy, to have a conversation of what do we need to do, what needs to come next? And what we were also able to brief the work group at the California Workforce Development Agency and and also the California State Library. And what we hope to do is in the upcoming months, be able to continue to engage in conversation, specifically actually going into regions that we saw highlighted within this study to talk about how we can take a community approach in developing these partnerships, strengthening the relationship, continuing to understand what the occupational needs are in government sector and public sector and how Calbright can feed into and help feed into that and design programs that are responsive to those programs at large and how we can also think about supporting our students through many different avenues into those occupations. So with that, I'd like to thank the board and we're open to take any questions. And I know Dr. Sederberg is here too, so.
Thank you so much for presenting this report. Vice President Aguanaldon has a question.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report. And Michael said this at the beginning of the presentation. We approved this as a board in August 2023. And the fact that you were able to make such a meaty report in nine months really speaks to the excellence and expediency of your work. So thank you very much for for doing this so quickly. My question is this, we, everything we're doing at Calbright is trying to make our students more competitive in a in an international marketplace. And as we talked about yesterday, we're moving at the speed of business. We're trying to move at the speed of business. So focusing in on one of the challenges you identified around hiring processes and inefficiencies, I thought was pretty important because we could do everything we can to create a really talented supply pool. And then they reach this bottleneck where they can't be hired. And in the meantime, and this is what I think you were talking about with respect to applicant demotivation, they're getting offers from the private sector. So I guess where are we in the conversation of removing the red tape? And I'll just give you a little bit of background. I served on the Los Angeles County Hospitals and Healthcare Delivery Commission where we talked about filling these talent gaps in the healthcare space in talent deserts. And there are ways to get around the red tape or to try to make that applicant process a little better, a little faster. But you know, it doesn't matter how much we're doing to create a supply pool if they're not going anywhere. So where are we in that conversation?
Yeah, so I'm happy to to kick us off. And I think Ben will also add some color to this. You know, I had the opportunity to wear a different hat prior to coming to Calbright as a deputy secretary over the Labor Agency in California. And so a part of the struggle there was really legislation, right? The merit law is kind of the merit law, but we want to better understand what are the barriers and unintended consequences of having everyone without, you know, listing equity per se, but go through the same process. When you talk about a person that is not familiar with government service and you say, take a test, we all go back to high school, college exams, or whatever the case may be, but it's really an experience study. So at Calbright, we're taking the approach of helping folks understand the nomenclature in public sector as well. That's one, right? Because that can be intimidating, have to take a test to get an entry-level job, things of that nature. That's one. But in that other hat, it was also discussing with legislators and policymakers, right? About how we can still create, staying true to the merit law, but create programs that are really pipelines into public sector, right? So a program that I know we worked on was Pathways to State Service, for example, that worked with those with the highest barriers of entry, partnered with HR teams at various public agencies, and literally cross-trained them on how to take the exam, the experience study, what it was to work at the public sector employer, and then timed recruitment based on the needs of that community at at large. That still holds true to the merit law, right? Because everyone's taking and going through the same materials. But it's partnering with community-based organizations, matching them and partnering with public sector and giving them an opportunity to to be competitive. I think on on the level of of Calbright, what we're doing that's so unique is we're engaging directly with public sector, right? For example, we're meeting with counties just recently, you know, signed an agreement with the city and and county of San Francisco to do just that, preparing our students for great careers. We're having great conversations in Southern California to make sure that we better understand the higher hiring process gaps, but that we're filling those gaps, still staying in compliance with with merit law as well. I think, you know, Vice President Aguanaldon, you mentioned something that's absolutely right. It takes too much time to get onboard in a public sector. And so one of the the things that I'm very happy about is that the governor has mandated CalHR to work with all state agencies across the board to evaluate both their hiring practice, but also a degree reset for those entry-level roles. And we're on the ground floor. That's the exciting part with the governor's administration on that effort, right? And so we're excited. Ben's team is doing some great work with local government. We have our Director of Partnership Development that's engaging directly with them as partners. And and we're really excited to be a part of this evolution. But you're right, it's not going to be an overnight fix, especially as it relates to legislation. But when we go to the communities where the district, you know, go to the different districts where legislators exist, they see, they understand the need to revamp and motivate folks to want to have public sector careers, which are honorable careers.
I'll add maybe one thing additional on this, which is systems change, like systems change just takes time. And we do know that to be case. And there there are some laws and some of those things are constraining and have the opportunity to be revisited from a policy perspective. But there is just a tremendous amount that actually can be done from a practices perspective. So there is a lot of low-hanging fruit on this one. And what this report helps do is to point out how, when and where. So we can already be at the at the local level and at the county level supporting best practices in the hiring process that create more open pipelines, especially in particular categories and areas of job roles that exist today and don't have to require a legal change. And so I do want to point out, there's a, there's a whole swath of that. That's an important momentum point. And we're not going to be the only ones driving that. So the fact that there's such a deep need from an employer perspective at city and county level, it's the right time to sort of introduce the kind of information we're supporting and introducing and to also be folks who are are at the table to support the direction that cities and counties in particular are already indicating they need to move to just out of necessity.
And I think, so one one more thing to add to that. So what was not included in this presentation but is in the full report is when we talked to a lot of the employers and just talked about like, what are some of the benefits of a government job? And what we're, we are hearing from employers and of course, like from students and from others in the space too, job security is one thing, retirement benefits, all of these are really advantageous and things that are a value add when we market them and sell them to our job seekers. And in fact, you know, some of these things, what we've done is try to engage and try to help our students better understand what does it mean to be working for a state agency? What does the process look like? And recently, I believe it was this week, we hosted or we invited somebody from local government to provide a workshop on how to how to apply for state jobs. And we had over 400 students sign up. So there's a lot of alignment coming not only from the demand side, but also interest from our students. Our students are willing, eager, want to be able to gain entry into these pipeline jobs to be able to find security for them and their families.
In the communities they live in.
And so I've had the benefit of working in the private sector, but also working for a city. And so I think the city and the county are, they're at a very, I really appreciated what you said because I think that is low-hanging fruit relative to the state. And so, and and I, this is probably more a comment. I will look forward to that, having worked in a state agency and the testing and all of the requirements. And then you get on, you get in this one category and you get moved to the next category. And there's always been these classes on how to get a state job. So I'm hoping that that is being renovated in a way that really can make a difference. Because it really is, we we lose a lot of people in that process. And it's unfortunate, it is truly unfortunate. I'll just leave it that that way. So I'm I'm rooting for you. I'm rooting for our students too.
Thank you.
Maybe this is just a comment on on outreach. I was really interested in the data that you presented on the underutilization rates by race and ethnicity. And so I'm grateful to see sort of the, sort of, you know, disaggregation there that I know is very important. Obviously, as an advocate of the the NHPI community, I'm glad to see that Native Hawaiians and the Pacific Islanders were also separated. Love to see also what South, our Southeast Asian populations may want to look like there as well. But in terms of outreach, I know a major barrier to these populations is, at least from an API perspective, but I'm sure from other racial and ethnic groups as well as the language barrier. I, and so I I don't know if you can speak to perhaps outreach again to just these certain groups of of individuals who could be brought into Calbright and and maybe speak about removing again those barriers, including obviously, language is a is a challenge, but other barriers that you possibly speak of. Thank you.
I think you mentioned a really a great point. And I think beyond even this work and workforce, it is a growth opportunity for the institution as it relates to being able to address those those needs across the board, language barriers. I know Dr. McCarty and I have this conversation quite often as we look at our three-year strategic plan and wanting to be even more intentional, to not just engage in terms of outreach to recruit, but to also internally be able to accommodate those needs of various languages in our institution. And that is a growth plan element, right, for this institution. And as we've grown, and as you've seen the growth and have spearheaded that growth, when I started two and a half years ago at just under 500 students, growing to greater than 45, maybe 4,700 now as our marketing vice president is likely listening in. And so it's an incredible growth, but it requires that level of due diligence in terms of the plan and administration of being able to address those needs. And it is on our growth plan to be able to, again, not just recruit and engage with various populations and the language barrier, but internally being able to support that in various areas of the functions we support here at Calbright. So thank you for keeping that front in mind.
Thanks for that. I will open this item up for any public comment.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Next up, we have our standing item, 5.4, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. Trustees, did you have any questions or comments on the item? Seeing none, I'm going to see if there's any public comment on the item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thanks. Next, we're going to move to our constituency group reports. And we have one today. We have a report from our, the president, Brandy Weaver, of our Associated Students of Calbright College. Hold on, Brandy, we can't hear you. Hold on just one second. Can you say that again, Brandy? I think I heard you. You're very faint. Hold on one second. Can you test it again, Brandy, so we can see if we can hear you? Yeah, perfect. There you go.
Great, thank you so much. All right, good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, Calbright College colleagues and honored guests. My name is Brandy Weaver and I'm honored to continue serving as the president of the Associated Students of Calbright College, or ASCC. Today, I'm pleased to provide you with an update on our activities and initiatives. As we concluded our term one in June, I'm pleased to report on our achievements and ongoing efforts. Our primary focus these past two months have been on supporting students in acclimating to the newly updated student portal. The transition has largely been smooth and we received positive feedback from the student body. Additionally, we have successfully increased student engagement on Slack, approximately doubling participation on our virtual Slack campus in the six-month period since January. This growth reflects our commitment to fostering a vibrant and connected virtual campus for our students. We're excited to share details about our recent Bright Star Awards event, which took place on June 26. This bi-annual event celebrated and recognized the outstanding achievements and contributions of students, alumni and employees at Calbright College. Nominations for awards were made by students and alumni, highlighting the collaborative spirit of our community. As ASCC continues their tradition to host the Bright Star Awards, we are proud to announce that Omnitara was the recipient of this term's North Star Award. In total, nine employees and 11 students were honored for their exceptional contributions. I'm also delighted to introduce our newly sworn-in cabinet members, who will be serving for our second term in 2024. Alongside myself and as president and Deanna Warren as vice president, ask you to please join me in welcoming Jill Dixon as Commissioner of Academic Affairs, Eric Moore as Commissioner of Academic Affairs, Kristen Davis as Commissioner of Student Support Services, and Mary Lou Reyes as Event Coordinator. We have also sworn in three new members since the time that this constituency report was prepared. So please let me know at the end if that is something I can add or if I need to stick to the original approved report. Overall, our team is really eager to continue driving positive change and support for all Calbright College students. In closing, I want to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees, our Calbright colleagues and guests for your ongoing support and collaboration. As we embark on this new term, I'm confident that our efforts will continue to advance the mission of Calbright College and provide unparalleled support to our student body. Thank you for your time and I look forward to updating you on our progress in the coming months.
Thanks, Brandy. And our council says you can tell us the name of those sworn in. Feel free to add an addendum.
All right, as an addendum, I am also eager to welcome Claudia Neckif as our Commissioner of External Affairs, Anna Havastian as a third Commissioner of Academic Affairs, and Kevin Guera as our Commissioner of Alumni Relations.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate the report as always. One tiny housekeeping thing before I open it up for public comment is generally in my report, I give kind of a readout of what happened in the previous executive committee. Actually, wasn't in attendance, so Hildy can tell me if I missed anything. But just briefly, we had a number of agreements that were entered to and approved by the executive committee, the first of which was an amendment or an agreement.
the first of which was an amendment or an agreement approval, excuse me, with Solid Digital. Next, an agreement approved with Compete Digital for enrollment, marketing, and advertising support. Another agreement entered into also with Compete Digital for video production and creative support. A no-cost addendum to extend professional services agreement with V Chief. And then lastly, a career catalyst program agreement amendment was also approved. As always, you know, these meetings are online, so feel free to review anything further. But I just wanted to make sure I did not miss that. With that, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard by the board?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. The hour is 11:33. And with that, the business of the Board of Trustees has commenced, and this meeting is adjourned.